Okay, I'd like to call a planning commission meeting, February 27th, 2025 to order. First action item is to approve the minutes from January 23rd, 2025. As for motion, second to approve the minutes, January 23rd.
I'll second.
Are there any questions or comments or corrections? If not. Any votes? Do we want public comment? Do we have any public comments, Amy?
It's a beautiful day.
Excuse me?
It's a beautiful day today.
Okay, seeing no requests to speak to public comment, we'll move on to our subdivision and land development applications. The first one is subdivision plan number 2025-1. The address is 155 and 164 Mount Pleasant Road. Application was in our packet, plans were in our packet, and there is a review letter from Jen. And who am I going to be, review letter?
Um, pretty straightforward subdivision. The lot currently extends on both sides of Mount Pleasant Road. They want to subdivide it by the road. So they're gonna have Lot 1, which is north side of Mount Pleasant. That's got a stream and flood plain in the back. The only development on there, there's a small existing shed. Couple years back, I think it was 2021, there was a land development for a rural occupation building approved for this lot. But the applicant never finished meeting all of his conditions, goes to security and stuff, so that's still hiding out there. But nothing with this subdivision would affect that property. We only treated what was on the north side of the road in conjunction of that at the time. The south side of the road has the existing ag buildings house. All of that's remaining the same. There's no new improvements or anything proposed here. I heard Ron Gerstein, the surveyor, he was unable to attend tonight, he's out of town. But he didn't have a problem with anything. In the review letters, lot areas, everything are compliant. He'll make some notes about the repairing offers and restrictions for development on Lot 1 in the future with the flood plain and the stream. Ron usually sets all the monumentation prior to recording of the plan. He did draft legal descriptions for each lot. They're putting in the sewage planning on building waiver, that's currently with the health department for their sign off. As it's a minor subdivision, landscaping for that's at the discretion of the planning commission. Like I said, there's no improvements proposed at this time. So I don't know if you guys see any need for any landscaping to be added. If that land development, that rural occupation on Lot 1 ever moves forward, whatever landscaping was required for that will have to be installed as part of that project. All right, and general comments. With just the note, I did send a copy of this letter to the engineer that did that rural occupation. Plans that they'll need to update their plans to deflet this subdivision before that plan's reported. And just a couple general notes about the lot being in 319. That should say Chesapeake County, not Burrows. Yeah.
May I pick that up?
Yeah. I think Chris Ellipen had it also, but yeah, I was in the wrong county. But besides that, they don't need any waivers or anything else. So Ron asked if you guys would consider a recommendation of conditional final approval. Could you legit, I'm compliant with my 3rd grade point in the class. You had any objections to the letter?
What's the rural occupation?
It was for Daniel Stoltz, who's, I think, who's a stoner.
Just curious.
I kind of think it was like a woodworking business, maybe? But yeah, here in 2021, and we've sent them, the township sent them a letter probably within like the last year. See, it even put in building plans for the building at the time. And I think, I don't know, I think we were just waiting for the later development to be recorded. But that was signed under the 2015 building codes, and now they're under 18. So we told them we'd have to, you know, redo those.
Does that expire at some point?
Yeah, the permit hasn't been, usually when the states adopt a new building code, the building codes come out like every three years. There was usually like a, I think it's like six months to a year kind of grace period. Almost that, you know, if your permits were already submitted and in under review under the old ones, you're good and, you know, sometimes the first couple, you know, things that come in, we go into the old ones. But we've been under the 2018 building codes probably since 2022. Yeah, or 2020, no, 21. Yeah, it takes a couple years for them, it's weird. Cause there's 21 that have moved out now. But it's been too long to allow plans under the 15 building code. But we hadn't heard anything back from them in terms of wanting to.
Move forward?
Yeah, move forward with that. So his plan approval, it was approved in 21 until we go to 26. So probably towards the end of this year, we expect that he would send, you know, one more notification to him. Like you'll have to restart the entire process.
So what he had, final, like, did he include plans?
He had conditional final plan approval and just didn't finish up those insecurities and move forward with it instead.
Any other questions for Jen? Again, someone willing to make a motion to recommend conditional final, conditional type of conference. Letter dated February 20th, 2025.
I'll make a question.
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All in favor of approving the conditional final, say if I say aye. All right, any votes?
Yeah, that's the cut.
And next, the next action item. Sir, are you here for the, um, the plan that Ron Gerstein had run us?
Yes.
Okay, you just, you just got a recommendation for final approval.
You did?
Condition on the letter.
Again.
So you, your next stop is supervisor.
Yeah, we'll send the, yeah, I'll send the letter in the mail and let Ron know also. But it will go on, I think it's March, well, whatever that second Wednesday in March is, it'll be on the board meeting that night.
Yes, thank you.
So our next, our next action item is we're revisiting the Vernon McIntyre plan. The plan was included in our packet. Jen's letter was included in our packet. Jen, if you'd like to get through your letter, and maybe explain to us what has changed since the last time we saw this?
Right, we saw this November of last year, I think, when they were contemplating, doing some modifications and phasing of the project. You guys had given some general feedback and we told them, you know, go back with the plans and then submit your formal waiver requests for the changes. So as a recollection, this property has an existing house up near the front. And in the very rear of this property is a basin that serves as development off of a park in Anthony, back there. So what Vernon was intending to do was to demolish the existing house, build a twin dwelling unit upwards the front part of the property. Behind it, put a proposed contractor shop. And, you know, looking at cost and the cost of paving and some other items, he was looking to make a few changes to the layout of the property. One of them, for that Penn Dot entrance coming in, the entrance would still be 28 foot wide. Coming in there, it's a little wider where the radii come out, the Penn Dot on it, 20 foot radii on there for any trucks coming from the contractor shop. So they have one waiver request in here. Our seller doesn't allow the driveway width to exceed 36 feet unless you're medium wider. So it, because of the larger per radii, it gets wider there at the end. So they put in a formal waiver request for that. That's really stemming from the Penn Dot department. The key changes related to the township are when you go inward from the site. They were asking for a reduction in the driveway width coming in. They originally wanted to go down to 16 foot. And when we talked in November, the planning commission was more inclined for the part that goes up until you get past the houses to have it 20 foot wide because of two-way traffic in there. So they have widened or proposing to have a driveway width of 20 up until you get past the turnoff for the residential units. And then on that, they were looking at going down to a width of 12 just for what would be going back to the contractor shop. See, they have their parking spaces. They only need a couple parking spaces through there in the ADA space. So one is the, generally you're supposed to have paved common driveway areas. And unless otherwise waived by the township, you know, the parking area on the contractor shop and everything should be paved. They're looking at only paving that entrance area coming in from what's required by Penn Dot. And then having gravel for the house parking and driveway. And all the way back, all around the contractor shop, they would pave the handicap space for ADA requirements. So they are requesting waivers to have the parking spaces to be gravel as well as the section of common driveway, except for the entrance through there. And, yeah, I think three of these waivers are all kind of related to the gravel parking. And then their last request is they want to record it as a singular plan, but only post security for the residential part. They have a phase one, phase two line drawn. They'll install the driveway up to a point about 18 foot past the turnoff for the houses so that if somebody goes to turn down, you know, the driveway area for the houses and, you know, it's blocked or they need to turn it down, they could execute a K-turn in there and have enough driveway to do that. And they'll look at whether, as far as their stormwater, making sure that that rain garden in front is sufficient for this development. They'll look at whether or not that inlet that's back between the houses and the contractor shop needs to be installed. And they know they need to provide with a temporary grading plan for phase one to show how that contractor shop area would be graded, so it doesn't have any impact on, you know, the houses and stuff up front. In terms of landscaping, they landscape scheduled, they would plant the ones around the main garden in phase one. The two trees that are kind of on either side of the driveway in there in phase one. And the two down near the Penn Dot entrance, all in phase one. And then the other trees that are between the contractor shop and the houses and along the driveway going back to the contractor shop in there in the rear, they would propose to put that landscaping in in phase two, when the contractor shop would be built. So the notes on the plan, if the township granted the deferral of phase two, would say that basically no building permits for that contractor shop would be issued. And they'll like post it security and everything for that phase and then improvements. So the key things for the planning commission to weigh in on it. Before you weigh in, I'll let Vernon chime in with any he has. But one, are you okay with everything being gravel parking with the exception of the entrance up front? And then two, are you okay with that extra width at 322 for the driveway? And are you okay with the phasing? And the, you know, driveway configuration going from 20 and then, you know, down to the 12 going to the contractor shop there? Vernon, do you have anything to?
Jen, as always, your absolute, that's what we need to make the plan affordable.
Couple of questions. Are you gonna miss?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss.
So, so you'll be responsible when stones wash out into the paved area?
That's correct.
This, do you ever have any plans to, to pave this at some point?
At some point I would want to pave it, but we don't pay it by the way, and on the escrow money, we'd like to pave it after six months or so. And then I would, I would pay this.
First question, if there is, if there is kind of an end game to the paving, I, I would personally have an issue with gravel, the extra width. I don't see a problem with the extra width out of 322. And the phasing, the only question out with the phasing is, so you're gonna put in the paved handicap space with phase one?
That's correct.
And, and what purpose is that gonna serve in that location?
Yeah, I think the handicap space for that contractor shop would be done with the contractor shop. But that's the only area that would.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood that.
Gary, if the tenant sits protected, they're not gonna give a building permit until the engineers agree on it. That's where I would, who's that escrow for that?
No, I understand that, I was just, I, I wasn't sure when you were gonna put that handicap in. I, I misunderstood, thought it was gonna be put in up front.
No, it was just, that, that also has to be paved in addition to the entrance. The engineer for that, I did ask about washout concerns and things like that. And just maintenance, I, we had a stone driveway growing up and you have to shovel it. And I had to pave the driveway and my, you let me use the snowplow, so it's a lot easier. But again, Vernon will own it, so, you know, our maintenance comes out. But his engineer did say it's fairly gentle grating proof here. So we shouldn't have, you know, it's not a super steep driveway that you know you're definitely gonna wash out, so you don't have to be storming.
So how is the stormwater gonna be addressed for the residential units? I don't have a problem with phasing.
Right, they have a main, that main garden in front.
And is it gonna sheet flow or is it gonna be piped to that rain garden? I don't, yeah, sheet flow.
If you need to put a split or drain in the contractor shop, be able to feed it forward.
Yeah, I see that inlet and.
Yeah, they'll have to show, before they would be able to record the plans, Gary, they would have to add a phase one temporary grading exhibit. And they'll need to show, you know, that the grading around that house is going to get everything to that main garden and then the other developed portion of the lot, if there's any temporary grading necessary, so that it doesn't affect that house. And we're not sending too much to the main garden.
So you're limited disturbance, this, this doesn't require NPDS, so just being an ask. So it looks like you're, and I don't have issues with this, but it looks like, excuse me, your disturbance is going to go beyond the phase, uh, phase one in order to, to build those units. But, well, my real question is, I assume they're gonna be peak roof shed, your roof will shed water front to back. What happens with that water in the back of the building?
There's, there's the gable roof front, and then the gutters on each side would have to be piped into the rain guard.
So, so if I understand correctly, you're, you're gonna pipe the back to the front, so that it gets to the rain guard?
The, the two sides would come to the front. It, it's not a front to back pitch, it is now, it's a gable front. And the sides, on each side.
Oh, so looking at it, you're, it goes like this, okay, got it. So your, your, your downs, or your, your roof gutters are gonna slope from back to front, and your downstouts are gonna be in front, got it, okay.
So you're gonna have gravel in front of the houses?
For now, I may eventually, any time would be to.
What's your timeframe for eventually?
Probably, I'd do, I'd like to have it paved before the winter's on.
Well, that was my concern, because what happens when we get 10 inches of snow?
I pray for 10 inches of snow, I have a Jeep with the most expensive snow tires and I've never used it. But I, I, you would take care of the snow plowing anyway. And I've been in this town for 30 years, it's affordable, the house. So I would, I would like to have all that paved, probably as far as, and I come up with an extra $50,000 for escrow. And I'm not, I'm doing this out of my checkbook, I'm not doing this alone. So it just keeps on adding, 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 and on and on. But Mike, again, we have that paved before we do the contractor shop. And at the time, we eventually taped two, but I don't wanna do that initially.
Is there a way to kind of solidify that thing? Cause I, I think it needs to be done when the contractor shop goes in, I think commercial vehicles coming in now, they're, it should be paid.
So Vernon, would you be agreeable if they were to grant kind of a partial waiver to allow?
What if we do it by occupancy, of the commercial?
Right, I'm thinking whether as part of the phase two security, if you have it, if by the time you go to build that contractor shop and post your phase two security, if you have it already paved, that, that common part of the driveway and the part in front of the residences, would you be agreeable to posting the security at that time?
I would, I would agree to having it paved.
Paving it at that time?
Yeah, I would have it paved at that time.
And then Aaron, for your thing, are you, when you were talking about the trucks, are you looking for the contractor shop area to be paved too? Or you're worried about the common part of the shared driveway and the area in front of those houses? And you would like to see that much definitely paved, and then the contractor shop?
I was kind of thinking all of it.
How soon about? I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
The stone is considered impervious as if it was paved, correct?
Correct.
How does the stormwater get into that infiltration area if it's not paved? It's gonna be sloped with stone, and it'll still get there. I have no stones to get into that infiltration. Doesn't really show detail on, on how that. It looks like there's a small inlet that's not into the infiltration pit.
Yeah, I think there's an inlet there, and then there's an inlet.
But the inlet, the inlet on the, on the 322 side, that, 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 I don't think that's going back into the basin or into the infiltration pit.
It's the original.
That, the one on 622 side would go into the rain guard.
And it looks like that's an overflow from the infiltration pit alongside the contractor shop. My question is, how do you get all that water on a, on a site that's relatively flat into that back inlet if you're not gonna pave it?
The back inlet?
That looks like that's the only inlet that's gonna take.
I don't have a plan yet, but I believe there's that.
So that inlet that you're pointing to on the 322 side, it says it's, the side has an, um, an outlet structure.
Right, that's what I.
Yes, let me.
It's the one on the south side.
I know, let me see which.
That would be big enough to have a little.
They're calling, they're calling a two by two. The detail's showing a two by two on the south side. Then the two by four is the one that's the outlet of the infiltration pit. The, the concern is, so you have all, you have all parking area on the south with contractors building.
I, it must be, it might be you these plans were doing. All of the downstouts for the building are teed into that infiltration facility. And then that inlet that's on the back side is stumped to collect the gravel area from beyond there. And the building comes in, so it looks like it may be the balance of that gravel area drains down into that inlet on the 322 side and it should be divided main market facility.
Okay.
I have two things, I think the stone is impervious, but you know, it is, it is impervious to some degree.
I just meant, I just meant that it was included in the calculations so that when it's paved, that often there's nothing additional needs to be done for stormwater. So it's like there's, looks like there's a high point kind of middle of the infiltration. So from the middle of the contractor shop, it goes back, and then from there it goes front. Yeah, it does look like there's a slope. Back, back to what Aaron asked, just to expand upon that. I just, I just, there's not a lot of slope to it. And I'm concerned that if you're not gonna pave it at some point before you start using the contractor shop and you're running trucks in and out there, and you're starting to get rutted up, that water is not going to get into that two by two yard area, where's it gonna go?
Are you agreeable to, at the time, if we defer paving of the residential portion up front until phase two, when you go to do the contractor shop? when you go to do the contractor shop, are you willing to pay secure to paint everything at that time?
I would, I would do that. I I see Garrett's point, because once the, if there's a lot still in there, and this is what.
Yeah, and really the integrity of that stormwater system that you're putting there. You know, the trucks running over the pavement is more stable. So ultimately, the waiver request regarding gravel parking, if you guys were inclined, what it sounds like you're inclined to make a recommendation for is that you're willing to defer paving of the entire area to phase two. That in phase one, they would be allowed to keep the residential area as regular. But at the time that we go to post security for phase two, then paving of the entire area needs to be included. Is that?
I'd be okay with that.
I'd be okay with that. I'd encourage you to get a base later, except I think it would be nice for the people who live there to have paved. There's no, I mean, kids, if your kids live in there, like you're out in the panel, whatever on the driveway. He's your meeting, but yeah, I would be fine with that.
Okay, are you guys, is everybody good with the waiver for that extra driveway width down three twenty-two because of the radii head up? Okay. And is everybody okay with the phasing and the delineation of the landscaping that goes with that?
So if phase two never happens, phase one can still.
Yeah, that's why they'll have to give us a grading exhibit. And they'll be temporary grading, you know, to make sure drainage works because phase one. And they'll have to show that that main garden is designed to which by the way things are graded, looks like nothing related to the house development will go to that infiltration facility. They do have to show us that that main garden alone supports phase one. All right, so if everybody's good, would be looking for a recommendation to the board to grant the waiver for the expanded driveway width. To grant a deferral of paving for phase one until phase two. And to allow the phase one, phase two deferral. So ultimately requiring paving of the whole thing, but not until phase two would be.
So our action's gonna be on, on the three waivers with the clarification of the deferral.
Yes.
So that's, that's what the ask is.
Can we take all the ones?
We, I believe we can.
Yeah, you can take all this one motion, I'll write it down as such.
So so the motion would include, so we're clear, relieve from section twenty-two, six fifteen, three C, section twenty-two, six seventeen, one L, section twenty-two, six seventeen, one O. And then the deferral would be, as we discussed with the phasing and the paving that relates to all of it gets paved in phase two. So if that's acceptable, let's ask for motion. Second. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Vernon, that will be, you've already conditioned the plan before. This will be on the board supervisor's agenda from March twelfth. I'll send the letter to you and Chris with summary of what was actually taken here.
Excellent. Thank you. We have no zoning hearing or conditional use application through you. We have no other business. So the next action item must have been comments from the board, would be to, for Jared.
They moved what I believe, because I believe they did this at the board meetings. There's only one public comment section now for all topics at the beginning of the meeting. So it's on the agenda, it just says public comment under item C. It used to say public comment on agenda items. And then there was a second public comment on any item, but they just moved it to a single public comment. I believe that's how last month's board meeting was that was the first time I was aware of the change.
I have a question. What about some of us that can't be here to make that public comment? You know, in the beginning of the meeting and arrived late like I did because of work issues? I mean, what can we do about something like that?
Guess you can always send a written request to the, to the office.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know why, you can always do that. Okay. Motion moved, Jared?
Anything come forward?
Second. All in favor? Okay, thanks for coming out.